Yeah. Any levels for your pills? I'm so happy to have you guys here.
Glad you came, right Zach?
Yeah. Glad I did. I could be nerdy someday, can't I?
Yeah.
Someday? Yeah, I'll be great sir with that someday.
Be there. Big one this time.
Yep.
Like to call to order please the Board of Education meeting for Celine area schools for April 12, 2022 at 6:30 PM. If everyone could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, happy April. Welcome back from spring break and hello to all of our wonderful guests. Because we do have a lot of students with us this evening and they're holding their instruments and they're ready to go. We pulled our student showcase up into the front of our program, so whenever you are ready. So, so well done. If that doesn't make you want to dance and smile, I don't think anything will. Would you like to say a couple of words, Mr. Lampman, about your group?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to play tonight. We meet at 6:45 in the morning, Tuesday, Thursday mornings, and we don't get to play for anybody. So, to play for real people is really, really fun. So, thanks for being an audience and for welcoming us tonight. And hopefully you're going to be seeing us around in the community more soon as we get more of those opportunities coming up. So, wonderful here tonight, thank you so much. Aren't they awesome?
Excellent. I see, I see a lot of proud parents and guardians out there, so congratulations and thank you again. Now is our first opportunity for public comment, please. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. The presiding officer is guided by the rules set forth in policy 167.3, which has been reprinted on the public comment form collected this evening. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. I have two forms for first public comment, both from parents, and seeing no students, we will go to parent number one, Danielle Gillespie. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you, trustee Miller. If you all would like to, to get up and leave, we could ask Mrs. Gillespie if she could just pause for a second. You are welcome to stay, but I'm sure you have homework activities and practicing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jenny, thank you. They were, they were very polite, thank you. I get rolling and... All right, and thank you for waiting. Student led. All right. All right, whenever you're ready, Danielle.
Is it on? Okay. Just here as a concerned student athlete mother, just asking if you guys could please maybe delve a little deeper into the volleyball situation that's going right now? We have a lot of families, at least friends, that are on the team. The investigation seemed a little poorly handled, but just to bring it to your attention, I don't even know if you guys even know anything about it. But, that is all. Just wanted to bring it to your attention, maybe make it an action item next board meeting. I know a lot of the parents couldn't be here tonight, so I said I'll just kind of slip a notification into everybody, but the mental health situation isn't great, and I do know a few of the girls personally who are in counseling and/or still having issues. And they deserve a voice to be heard, and unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight. But if we could maybe look into that a little closer as board members, as representatives of the community, that would be greatly appreciated, because I'm sure we all have little kids that might get there someday, and if it's tolerated in volleyball, who knows what other sport it's tolerated in? So, that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your feedback. I feel to mention that secretary Jones with public comment, at 30 seconds out, we'll show the yellow card, and at three minutes, we'll show the red card. So, if you can complete your thought, we would appreciate it. Next, we have parent Jen Scarpatty. Okay, and whenever you're ready to speak, if you could make sure the mic is on.
Some very concerning things have been brought to my attention this week with volleyball, wrestling, and the overall treatment of the teams and our student athletes. We send our children here to Celine, and we have trusted you with them. And Celine dropped the ball, allowing these student athletes to be harassed, intimidated, and bullied. That coach should have been fired immediately following the concussion of the young lady, as written in the report. After reading that report from Molly, I urge this board to stop saying this is an HR issue and get involved. If you want, I have all the files and the report here too, as well as given to me. Celine sent out a survey for information on trusted adults within Celine schools. I don't know whether to laugh because of the lack of awareness on your part, or to cry. Your lack of transparency should give any parent pause. Here's a perfect example. Back in August, when parents emailed about why not a survey, to see where everyone is on masking and the return to learn, that was met with a resounding no from Latch, Mr. Latch, Dr. Latch, and the board backing this and giving total control to our superintendent. With that reasoning, Steve was masking these students. Steve was making these decisions because of health and safety. Well, in that report, you'll see, we weren't. We have and continue to FOIA the Health Department regularly since SAS charges ridiculous and unethical fees to keep parents from information. In the FOIA I made a copy of for you guys, Steve is looking for the Health Department to arrest and scare parents that came to meetings unmasked, three out of 50. Health and safety, I don't think so. Meanwhile, everywhere else, we were all, we all went, all of us, we didn't have to mask. We only had a mask in school. So, was this really about health and safety? We know now it wasn't. I urge you as a board to do your due diligence and look at what this employee has done, and I urge you to FOIA the Washtenaw Health Department. Or you can maybe ask our superintendent, who won't charge you the parent FOIA pricing. And just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. Maybe he took a page from the board, because I was under, I'm under the assumption, and I was told by Tran, that the board was looking at arresting parents that were looking to take, get pictures of you guys unmasked while you were masking our, our students. They lost another whole year of normalcy. These are the adults our kids are supposed to trust. Which brings me to my final question. Mr. McVeigh, where is the apology you promised our community? The February board meeting about masks afterwards, you came and talked to us parents, saying you were going to apologize. I have emailed, I haven't heard back, but other parents were told that there was going to be an apology, and that this was not the way it kind of came out. When our own board member amplifies a violent comment and doesn't apologize, what are we supposed to do? This lack of transparency, the culture of hypocrisy, does not warrant any trust from us as parents or our children. If that same comment was flipped around and said by, say, me or another parent who didn't want our kids in masks, you would have been on the phone with the police. Yet, we have a board member that says it, and people are laughing at it, and we're supposed to trust you. I just want you to know that Jack Scarpatty, his two parents are who he trusts. That's it. In closing, I would urge you to look into these things with the Health Department, because in the beginning of October, it was illegal, the mask mandate, and we all knew it.
If you could complete your comment, thank you, Tran.
Sure, sure. Yesterday, Chelsea's board was served with a lawsuit. From what I hear, this could happen to us. The truth always comes out, no matter what the cost of the FOIA is.
Thank you for your feedback. I have no response to previous public comment, besides email us at sasboard@celineschools.org or use the Let's Talk app, and thank you for communicating with your board. I'd like to move on now to our agenda. Revisions and approval of the agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. So moved. Miller? Thank you, Jenny.
Support, Eastup.
Thank you, Susan. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. Moving on to our first scheduled report of the evening, Continue to Learn Plan, featuring Weber Bliss highlights, Dr. Latch, and our guests Cheryl, Charlie, and Chloe.
Okay, we are going to be doing a brief Continue to Learn Plan update, which is, I believe Ben is getting up on the screens here in just a minute. And that will be a COVID update on where we are in the district. And then after that, I'm going to turn it over to our special guests, which are Cheryl, Charlie, and Chloe. So, we're looking forward to that. Okay, as Ben's, not quite yet, we're going to do, we're going to do the other element, element first, and then, and then I'll turn it over. Okay, so generally, I'll, do you want to get it? I'll tell you what we'll do. Let me bring my laptop in. Okay, so this is brief today, but in a pattern that we've been doing at each of the board meetings, I'm giving a brief COVID update. As we have come back for spring break, we are seeing a little spike in cases throughout Washtenaw County. However, as you look at the next slide, you're going to see that our dashboard has remained in, in fairly good shape here. In other words, yes, we have some students out and some staff out with COVID. However, this, this is not an extreme number in comparison to what we saw last spring break, for example. And so, I do, I do think it speaks to, we've, we're all learning how to deal and cope with, with COVID, and we're moving forward appropriately in the district and in the community. And I think this is positive data as we move forward. The next slide talks a little bit about how Nurse Hervey has organized free at-home COVID tests in this backpack program in consultation with the Michigan Health and Human Services. And in essence, it allows parents to choose to have these rapid tests sent home in backpacks that, that families can choose to access whenever they want. And so, there's currently a signup process going on where families can elect to have these coming home to opt into this program. And then the next and last slide talks a little bit about our district dashboard. We've had this posted for the last several years. We are starting to phase out. It's no longer required, and that effective this Friday, we'll be phasing out the dashboard along with many other districts throughout Michigan. But that doesn't mean we're not continuing to track COVID activity. We certainly are. We're reporting any positive cases that come into the district. And then as a result, I'm also going to be scaling back these presentations with COVID updates. I can report relevant things that develop, but there won't be the scheduled Continue to Learn COVID update anymore moving forward at board meetings. So, with that said, we're going to move right on to the next presentation, which I'm very excited about, and that is going to be Cheryl, Charlie, and Chloe to lead us through not only what Weber Bliss is all about, but a little bit of enactment as well. So, come on up.
Good evening. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Cheryl Heft. I was a teacher in Celine High School until I retired in 1994, and I have continued to be involved in this district in a variety of aspects, so you see me around. And therefore, I've gotten to know a lot of you because of that. But tonight, I'm here to talk about Weber Bliss School, because during COVID, we did some unique things, and we wanted to familiarize you with that. So, with that introduction, Weber Bliss School One Room is now in session. Donated by Milton and Janet Weedmeyer, this one-room school was moved from the corner of Ellsworth and Gensley Road, District 13, Lodi Township, Washtenaw County, State of Michigan. It was one of the last 40 schools in the Celine School District that continued to exist. Today, it was formally known as the Celine School District. Before consolidation and until 1955, it served as the education facility for the rural farm children like myself, and we received our education there. Children K through eight walked there daily from their family farm, and the school was the pride of those communities. Records show that one teacher taught all the grades, and we know some schools had as many as 45 students. Former Superintendent Leo Johnson and the Board of Education in 1955 recommended the closing of these schools, and that's a whole political issue. I was in second grade. At that time, in the fall of 1955, we went on the big yellow school buses and came to town to the recently built Jensen School and Union School. But on June 19th, 2002, 20 years this coming June, we raised 175,000 in grants, donation, fundraising, and in-kind to move and relocate Weber Bliss to the one-acre lot over here on Woodland. Working with Superintendent Ellen Ewing and the Board of Education at that time, they provided us with the lot. Scott Grayden, he was not superintendent yet, and myself co-chaired that group. My husband Jim, Doug Bacon, Robert Cook, Wayne Clemmons, Taylor and Barry Jacobson, Phyllis Martin, and Paul Tebow also assisted. At our dedication on September 26th, 2004, we donated Weber Bliss back to the schools, Celine Area Schools, and created a 501(c)(3), Celine Area Schools Historic Preservation Foundation. Word of advice, if you ever create a 501(c)(3), keep it short to operate the school. This is a volunteer group of individuals with an interest in one-room schools who have educated themselves on the learning that occurred between the walls of these buildings. In reference, Weber Bliss is now a living history museum to reenact a day in the life of a student, dressing as they did in those days, eating a typical lunch, learning the lessons, and playing the games. Simultaneously, we worked with the teachers of Celine Area Schools to prepare a curriculum. It fit best into the third and fourth grade and met Michigan's social studies standards. Second grade was added later. And so, to date, annually, Celine's second through fourth graders visit to understand the education in those days, consolidation in life in the late 1800s and early 1900s. But during COVID, when field trips were not permitted, we brainstormed our activities. We had always wanted to record the history as we know it, both of Weber Bliss, Celine Area Schools, consolidation, and one-room schools. We have schoolmasters and docents who have attended national and state conventions, read on the subject, and prepared themselves to convey this information. The full video is 26 minutes. We're only showing you 10 this evening. Kay Todd was instrumental in organizing the content. Ben Goodman and Anna Britnell assisted us, and our own schoolmasters and docents did the content. And so, here is the 10-minute video.
While they're getting it set up, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What did they eat for lunch back in the 1800s?
I don't believe either of these. You don't?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Remember, we were from family farms, so the items were from there, and meat was probably left over from last night's dinner, fruit from the trees in the orchard, and vegetables from the garden. And my father, who attended the same one-room school that I did on Abethel Church and Auburn Road, it was the Renshaw School, and that was Celine School District, mentions the fact that he, an orange or banana was what he got in his Christmas stocking. That was not your typical daily lunch.
I got that. And how far would they, would most of the kids have had to walk to get to school? Like us, three miles each way through the snow?
Two miles. It was uphill both ways.
Uphill both ways.
And, yes, very typically, that was, that was somewhat the barometer of where the schools were located, approximately two miles apart.
And the kids would all have walked? They wouldn't have had their parents drop them off off the horse?
Correct. A horse was maybe common, a bicycle maybe, but not with rubber tires. And you would, you would find that walking. But walking, we, we tell the students, walking was like a bus, because if you lived here, you walked to the next house, and you picked those children up, and then you walked to the next house, and you picked those children up. So, walking to school was a social event for you, and that was part of the, the fun of going to one-room school.
That's great. I bet, I bet other people up here have questions too, because now you do.
I can ask questions, this is cool. Tell me about a typical, like, school day, like, it started, when it stopped, all that?
It started at nine usually. Remember, we're on a family farm, so the chores were important in the morning. And then, the children would arrive, lessons would begin, a teacher, one teacher to all those students. So, Sheriff's schedule was to do maybe first-grade reading, and then, while the others were doing the other activities. It was very independent. Now, I was the only child in
Now, I was the only child in my grade when I went to Renshaw. And so that's where I learned my independence, to do things and to monitor how I direct myself and study, et cetera. And those, your schedule then was two recesses during the day, 15-minute, lunch and recess at noon. You finished at four o'clock, but at four o'clock then, we didn't have custodians. So you therefore went to, some children cleaned the chalkboard, cleaned the outhouse, everything.
Yeah, today's days, we call that differentiation, right?
Okay. Okay, we're ready for the video.
Hello, and welcome to the Weber Bliss One Room Schoolhouse. It was built in 1869 on the corners of Gensley and Ellsworth Roads in Lodi Township, about six miles northwest of its present location. At this time in our history, 90% of the people earned their living in some phase of agriculture. Here at the school, farm children learned the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and other essential information that they would need to be successful farmers or the wives of farmers. The school day began at 9:00 a.m. and ended at 4:00 p.m. with an hour for lunch, so students who lived nearby could go home and eat, and two 15-minute recesses, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Before walking home at the end of the school day, janitorial work was assigned to the older students. This might include sweeping the floors, emptying the water pail, or cleaning slateboards. Usually, no homework was assigned because children had to help with farm chores in the evening. At this early time in our history, the mode of transportation was either walking or using a horse. Roads had no names, and landmarks were used in giving directions, such as a large tree possibly, or a building such as a church or school. Let's look around the schoolyard at some interesting artifacts. Notice the bell in the bell tower on the school roof. It's operated with a rope that goes into the main classroom. It was the only source of communication that the one-room schoolteacher had. She would use the bell to welcome students in the morning at 9:00, and in case there was an emergency, she would ring the bell, and farm families who lived the nearest to the school would come and see what the problem was. Now let's take a look at the flag. Patriotism and love of country were stressed by farm families. Notice the annex in front of the school. It was added in the 1920s when electricity came to the building. Now look at the whiteboard fence. It is a replica of the original fence. Notice the pump. It's over the well, and that was the source of water that was used inside the school, the outhouse or outdoor restroom. Some schools had two outhouses, but this school just had one.
Weber Bliss One Room Schoolhouse has a cloakroom when you enter the front door. Weber Bliss One Room Schoolhouse has a recitation bench. This is a long wooden bench that's located in the front of the classroom next to the teacher's desk. Our classroom library at Weber Bliss consisted of one wooden bookshelf, and the doors on it are made of glass. We have two large slateboards at Weber Bliss One Room Schoolhouse. The first slateboard is hanging above the teacher's desk. The second bigger slateboard is along the side wall. Because paper was hard to get during the days of the One Room Schoolhouse, children used these small slateboards, which are like chalkboards to write with. They had to write with this little tool called a slate pencil. Slateboards and slate pencils were made of rock. This will give us a good view of the various desks in the room. As you can see, we have small desks in the front, and the larger desks are in the back of the room. You notice the holes in some of the desks? That's called an inkwell. As the children got older and were able to use the ink and the pen, they were introduced to writing on paper. This is called a potbelly stove. It was the only means of keeping it warm in the One Room Schoolhouse. There was, of course, no electricity in the One Room Schoolhouse, so they had to rely on the light from the windows to do their work. Some schools eventually were equipped with possibly a kerosene lamp. Welcome and good day, students. We are going to learn what a typical day in a one-room schoolhouse is like. So get in your listing positions with your feet flat on the floor, shoulders straight, and your hands folded in front of you on your desk. School's in, the ringing of the big school bell outside means that school is about to start for the day. Opening exercises are the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance in Unison and roll call. When roll call is taken, please stand up, say "Here ma'am," and sit down. You will always stand when speaking to me to show respect. The first lessons of the day will be reading, spelling, writing, and memorization. When your group is called, you will come to the reading bench, and we will read aloud in the McGuffey readers. When you are not at group, you will be sitting at your desk doing your other lessons. The ringing of this bell means to change reading groups, to quiet down, or to come to lunch and recess. Lunch and recess are a time for you to socialize and exercise. Outdoor games include hoops, graces, walking on the stilts, playing tag, playing eee-yi-ee over, and more. Inside games include shuffleboard, beanbag toss, hiding the thimble, passing the ring, or more. After lunch and recess is arithmetic. Paper is expensive, so you will be working on slates using a slate pencil that can be erased. You are to memorize all your addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division facts and learn how to cipher. This means you will know how to carry over and borrow when doing more complex arithmetic problems. Story problems can be done either in your head or using the slate. The rest of the afternoon's lessons will be grammar, science, geography, history, public speaking, and elocution.
Today, I'm going to talk and give you information about discipline used by schoolmasters in a one-room school in the late 1800s. There were a variety of approaches to discipline, and a schoolmaster would decide what was appropriate to use in various situations. There were two forms of punishment or discipline used in the one-room school. One was called embarrassing punishment, and the other was called physical or corporal punishment.
At the beginning and all the way through, I hope you saw a lot of the artifacts that we have at the school. And we just received an 1893 record book. I was looking through it. My cousin's grandfather is in this. I think this must have come from the Bridgewater area. So we do have a lot of the materials from that time period that connect us with our past and history. Next, I'd like to introduce, although you already know Anna, she's my co-chair of this committee and our two students. And so Chloe, would you first like to come up? This is Chloe Tandy, and I think she introduces herself. And you have your McGuffey reader that she's going to refer to.
Hi, my name is Chloe Tandy, and I'm a second-grade student in Mrs. Marshall's class at Woodland Meadows. My favorite part about Weber Bliss was playing hopscotch outside of the school. I also loved eating my snack on the quills outside. The school has books that students used in the early 1900s called the Pomerans. I am now going to read you a few lines. Please turn to page 13 to read with me. Reading together is how they used to do it. "A log, the frog. See the frog on a log. Rabbit sees the frog. Can the sock see a lab? The frog can see the dog. Rabbit ran at the frog."
Recitation and group recitation, like you just did, were very, very common. And then the next step would be for you to read individually when the teacher felt as if you were ready. And the next step was to start memorizing because books were at a minimum. And so as a result, the books that you have, The Primer by McGuffey, were one of the only books that were used for reading. And there is a great history about McGuffey. He was actually a Presbyterian preacher. The eclectic part of that title comes from the fact that he gathered those readings from poems and stories and all types of things, and even the Bible. So with that, that book is one of six. And when you get to the sixth one, it's definitely high school reading. Next, Charlie Britnell.
Hello, my name is Charlie Britnell, and I'm a fourth-grade student in Ms. Lorne's class at Heritage. My favorite part about Weber Bliss was learning how to use the stilts at recess. I had to work with my friends to figure out how to use them. There's also a game called Graces, which is played with two people, two rods, and one wooden hoop. Who would like to try to play catch with me?
Maybe the two of you can play afterwards, okay? Two points, Dr. Lott. Did he get it with two?
Yeah.
Okay, two to two. Okay, step back, each of you. Two to two. Or did you get four, Dr. Lott?
Yeah, he caught it. Four to two.
Okay, then a four to two. You can keep score, Anna.
Five to.
Step back.
Five four.
Thank you, Dr. Lott and Charlie. I think one of the conclusions after the games is all the games are made from wood, the buildings made from wood, the prevalence of the materials that we had in those days. We do a lot of then and now, the comparison of the one-room school to the present school that they're attending, whether it be Pleasant Ridge, or Harvest, or Heritage, or Woodland Meadows. And so the learnings from the artifacts are tremendous accomplishment for the children. And as my husband says, if there's one thing that you can learn from coming here today when you walk through that door, it's that life was very different in the late 1800s and 1900s. And I'll never forget the little boy who walked up to him one day and said, "Are you making all of this up?" And I think sometimes history does present itself that way. I would like to introduce some of the committee who's here this evening and let you know about their work. The Celine Area School Historic Preservation, will you guys raise your hands? They're involved, they're educated about one-room schools, they work hard for the funds in order to maintain the building and keep it operating for the three sets of classes that come, and I totally appreciate their time and effort. Will the docents and schoolmasters please raise your hand? Starting April 29th for the entire month of May, they will be at Weber Bliss, dealing with the classes that will be upcoming and the Celine teachers who visit. Thank you for your time and effort. And finally, for the few of us that attended a one-room school, all three of us are Celine School District attendees, and like I said, that's where a lot of the history that we have come from. If you see classes in attendance, we invite you to stop and visit. We'll tell the students that you're the county supervisor. They tended to visit once a year to assess the teacher, but be sure you leave your horse tied to the board fence out front. You are excused. Any questions?
That's fantastic. I think a lot of us, all of us would love to stop by. We will not assess any teachers there.
Okay.
So glad to see this preserved. It's so nice to have students back in that room again, One Room Schoolhouse again after COVID. Any questions or comments for Cheryl or her group? Yeah, Jenny?
I think on the board at least, I have the unique history of having taught there, not when Cheryl was a student, but when I was a teacher here. I visited with my second-grade class and also had the honor of working with Cheryl to develop the second-grade curriculum with Mary Ledford and Erin Diop Perez. And in fact, this lesson that Chloe read today, I think I have it memorized from the times that I was there. But sometimes we talk about then and now, and we compare things that are different, and there are a lot of things that are different. But one thing that always struck me was the recitation bench and how we still know and how research still supports small group instruction for reading and how we knew that at the very beginning. I learned to play shuffleboard on that wood floor. I learned to ring the bell gently because you can't pull a cord too hard. I was mesmerized by the maps and the artifacts and even made a couple trips to that scary basement. And was also really, really thankful that there is a working toilet inside the building now. So I just want to appreciate the work that you've done. And as a teacher, watching students experience that, as a parent, hearing my own children experience that, just the impact that it had on them. We in second grade actually took some liberties. We created historical fiction because our curriculum was tied to local history, and so there wasn't a whole lot for us to draw from. So we had to rely on Cheryl and the Celine Historic Society, and we created letters from actual people who from actual people who grew up in Celine. But the letters were things that we created from the historic events of the time. And I think parents still, if they have second graders, they hear as they're driving through town, like, "Oh, that house came in on the train!" And, "Oh, that house, you know, has furniture from the World's Fair." So we learned a lot, and being a transplant to Celine, I learned a lot and appreciate so much about our community and the history. So thank you for your work. Thank you for honoring me and allowing me to learn about our community and students for generations.
Well, thank you. And it's people like us that have come forth to help us develop. Go ahead, Brad.
But I will, I will say something real quick. So I feel like I should stand up. So I want to show you that respect. Auntie Ma'am, yes. So I just want to tell you as a parent of two kids who have participated in these field trips and been part of these processes, that like, it's important for us to pay attention to our history, and it's important for us to pay homage to it and to recognize from where we came and where, you know, and how good we have it in a lot of ways and all of that. But I just want you to hear from me as a parent, how much I appreciate the time, the effort, all the things that go into doing this and providing this opportunity for our students. So thank you.
And the people behind me deserve that too, because they put in hours in doing that.
Well, as a student who has been there in second grade, I remember being in kindergarten and having my older brother and sister get to go there, and I was just like, I have to go and sit in a classroom while they get to go and play outside. You know, it was cool. Driving by it every day was pretty cool. And then my brother and sister got to go, so then I waited my three years. Then I got to go, and it was pretty sweet. I don't remember too much from second grade with Diop Perez, but I do remember Field Day, of course, and the trip to Weber Bliss. And it was sweet. I remember it now. I remember playing outside with like that exact same stuff. So, you know, when kids come by, it's something that, you know, doesn't really just go right over the head, because it's a lot cooler than the day-to-day life of a second grader. So it's interesting. I remember it, I still enjoy it, and, you know, maybe someday I'll be given a presentation about what spike ball taught me at recess or something. Something like that, I don't know. So thank you very much. I still remember my time there, I'm sure. I don't know if, I don't know if you guys were there, but, you know. All students graduating, if you come to graduation and you ask about Weber Bliss, I'm sure plenty remember their trip there.
Thank you. Come in, Mary.
We did walk through big snow. And my father said, "If you can't get through, we're not taking you through." And I had to go to school with my brother or sister, so I was tag along in the snow. So those really were, maybe some people were better, exaggerated, but it happened.
So I was going to say this before you did, but my grandma grew up on a mountain in West Virginia, so I'm not trying to like, you know, one-up you, but she attended a small schoolhouse on the mountain and, you know, up and down the hills or mountains. So she got a fifth-grade education, and so I'm curious about, you said eighth grade? Was there a different, another school that the students would attend beyond the eighth grade?
Yes. One of the things that, you know, we found is that they vary tremendously from school to school. And attending the national convention, one of the things that I learned, the Christmas program, I'm saying Christmas because in the one-room school it was, and we tried to explain that differently. But in Wisconsin and Minnesota, the Halloween program was a big thing, because it was too dark by the time December 25th came for them to have such things. So we've tried to compromise what we're attempting to teach. And history is history, there's no doubt, like Brad was just saying. But in the same respect, we attempt to bring to light the various things that existed and continue to exist, because they are history, and talk about them, and are very sensitive to the fact that that's important. Pardon me?
Did students attend Union School after or before Union? What happened after eighth grade?
After eighth grade, I'm going to let my husband talk, because he's at, he's at. Tell him about your graduation from eighth grade. You took a test.
Which allowed me to attend any one-room, any high school in the state of Michigan. But all of us, since we were a part of the Celine community, went to Celine, and it was an historic Union School. It's now historic. And the second floor was for grades seven through 12. And my graduating class in 1954 consisted of 44 persons. And now we're at 400 and some.
We have Clara Bliss diploma from graduating from a one-room school. And I'm sure you're aware that our high school diplomas today are maybe eight by five or six by five. Her diploma graduating from a one-room school is about that big. And so we conclude and show to the students the importance of graduating at that time. And my father, who would be near 100 at this point, Betsy's father, also attended a one-room school. My father only went through eighth grade. He never took the test and went on to come into town. And I hesitate to mention this, but it does exist. We spoke to the Historic Society in Celine on Sunday, and when we came in, third grade then, to Jensen, you know, brand-new school, beautiful school at that time, we were the country kids, and we remained that title all the way through. And someone else was standing there who's younger than I am, and he said, "You know, that's very true. I forget about that." There were the town kids, and we were the country kids, because we came from the one-room schools at that particular time.
I'd like to add about the teacher. Clara Bliss was a student at the school and graduated, and guess what? Four years later, she came back as the teacher. Can you imagine being that young and having known these children all their life, then came back as the teacher responsible for their learning?
Well, we invite you to stop. Any more questions?
I just had a little question. I'm really hoping that we get back to our tradition of the ice cream social in August, and maybe threatening these board members, or I mean enticing these board members to spelling bees or other games at the ice cream social like we used to do.
Anna is pushing for having that and being co-chair of the committee. I foresee that it will be on the agenda. That's what I will say. Yes. Yes. So start practicing.
Oh, okay. We're ready.
All of the, all of the games of that time. Thank you for stopping by.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, everyone back there. Thank you.
And thank you to our two students.
Excellent. Charlie, the stilts are my favorite too. Oh, yeah, we should. Chloe, did you want to get these back? Charlie, I wanted to tell you the stilts were my favorite thing the first time I visited too, and was chaperone. Thanks, Chloe. All right. We might have to have her stay up here. Can we have her tonight? Did you get enough pictures? All right, excellent. Thank you so much. Moving on is our second scheduled report, Teaching and Learning Presentation, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in Culturally Responsive Instruction. We'd like to invite Shannon Washington to the podium. Oh, don't forget the bell. All right. Do you have this slideshow? Oh, yeah, thank you. No? Okay. I see a couple of board members have it. Okay. Or I can put it up on the screen. Yes, yep. Okay, no problem. I can get started. I, my son can play the drums, my dad, but I could dance. Okay, well, I'll get started. I am here tonight to share with you an update on my consulting plan, which I introduced in the fall. And I'm going to start by reminding you what the plan was, and then I'll show you where we are in the plan. And then I'll share with you some updates on things that we've done and some, okay, whenever you're ready, you can just pop it up there. Some things that we've done, little samples of things that we've done. I'll share with you some data, and then some recommendations, and let you know where we are kind of going to bring this plan to a close. You can go to the next slide. So this is what I brought in the fall. I shared a one-year plan that was in three phases, and I talked about how the purpose of the plan was to first come up with a definition of what culturally responsive instruction will be in Celine, and then to establish a timeline for the district to move toward that. This plan was also going to serve as a kind of a long-term, well, as a tool to have a long-term transition into having an instructional position that would specialize in culturally responsive instruction as part of the teaching and learning team. And so I divided it into three phases, and we are here, like that little arrow is where, well, that's where we were when we were, when I was making this slideshow. And I'll talk a little bit about what I'm working on now in Phase Three at the end, but that is about where we are. So, next slide, please. At the beginning of the year, my first encounter with teachers, I had all of the teachers in a professional development session, and whenever you have all of the people in one place, you collect data, and so that's what I did. And so I gave teachers this survey, and I'll share with you just a few of those data points. But if you are interested in seeing the entire presentation of that, that is hyperlinked in the top of this slide. And what you would be linking to is my analysis of the data. If you really want the raw data, because you just like really dig raw data, then I'll send that to you. Okay, actually, you have, there is a board member who really digs raw data, I know that. So if that's your jam, I am happy to send you the raw data. And I will be honest, there is a lot that I could continue to do with the raw data, but I tried to take kind of this first survey as a way to kind of guide the work through the year and to leave the building-level instructional leaders with something concrete to work with. So if you're interested in that whole report, that's hyperlinked there, but I'll give you a few, like a peek into what I found. So the first thing I found is that about half of all of the teachers expressed having participated in some kind of training related to culturally responsive instruction up to this point. And then a little under 10%, about 8%, we're not sure. And so, and that happens, right? As educators, sometimes we go to a thing, and we're not really necessarily taking that particular training and implementing it right away, so we're not quite confident there. And then others were pretty clear, no, we have not had any specific training there. So that really helped me to kind of gauge like where the staff was. And the conclusion I could draw from that was that more updated or refreshed training is needed. Next slide, please. So another question I asked the teachers was about how much they knew about their students' cultures and cultural identities. One of the hallmarks or core tenets of culturally responsive instruction is that teachers are aware of who they are teaching, and they have a basic understanding of the cultural identities of the kids in the seat. And what I found was only about half of the teachers agreed that they knew who their students were culturally. And then the other half of the teachers either disagreed or strongly disagreed that they knew their students' cultural identities. And so this helped me to look at what the teachers needed. And so I was able to follow up and find out that, you know, teachers needed time, actually teachers needed tools and time to learn about who their students were beyond just their names and their favorite movies. There was some work to do there. And then another thing that I learned from the survey was, and there were several things that teachers indicated as needs, but the two biggest needs, next slide, please. The two biggest needs were here, and I made them, you know, bigger on this slide, and I did share with all of the building administrators. 61 to 66% of teachers indicated that they needed realistic models of what culturally responsive instruction is so that they could implement it, and they needed time and space to collaborate with their colleagues. It was a very specific expression of need. And the, all of the research and all of the instruction around culturally responsive instruction indicates that the most beneficial professional development for teachers is collaboration, working with each other, and having difficult conversations or having dialogue about these, about culturally responsive instruction proved to be the most beneficial, more beneficial than bringing in experts and lectures and, you know, videos about it. Next slide, please. So I was able to meet with the entire administration and share some of the highlights and delights of the data. And when I presented to the admin, I divided it by elementary and secondary, because there were some differences between elementary and secondary. And then at the end of that, I tried to make three recommendations, and I tied the recommendations to Celine School Board philosophy. And that is something I really want to start normalizing in terms, in this work, because I found in the very beginning, if you remembered, I set out to look at what was already written in Celine's founding, or I should say foundational documents, looking at the compass, looking at the school board policies, looking at the school improvement plans, looking at the handbooks, looking at curricula, and looking at how culturally responsive instruction has been and is already happening or is supported by the foundational documents. And so I, every recommendation that I pulled, I connected it to what I see as really powerful school board philosophy. So I'll share those recommendations with you. So my first recommendation is that the leadership invests in professional development time for teachers to collaborate with their colleagues, so that those teachers can build realistic models of curriculum implementation, but that can also happen with teacher leaders and instructional leaders. And I tied that to two guiding principles from the school board philosophy. The first one was a commitment to continuous improvement in all that we do organizationally and individually. So this school board believes in continuous improvement and professional development. But there's also this idea that this needs to be an institution of ongoing training, so you have these ongoing training programs for all employees based on the ever-changing needs of students and society. And so if we're rooted in those two philosophies, we want to make sure that teachers, well, not just classroom teachers, because I've done some work with literacy tutors and with our ELL staff, and we want to make sure that there is ongoing training for them as well. The second recommendation was that it was important for leadership to articulate their support and the support of the entire educational system for teachers doing this work and the risk it entails. One of the things that I have found out in interviews and in focus groups is that there are teachers who express feeling like this is risky, and that's something that's, you know, heavily documented for decades in the literature, going back to when this was called multicultural education all the way till now, that it is a risk for teachers to do that it, it is a risk for teachers to do something differently, to do something um, that embraces things that can be considered contentious even if they're not contentious. And so, one of the school board philosophies, this happens to be a personal favorite of mine, as I like to, I hang out on board docs. Um, is that is that, I like the way that this is written, "The development of an organizational environment which nurtures trust and respect and eliminates the fear which stifles innovation and risk-taking." Now whoever wrote that, I don't know if they meant it, but I'm gonna keep reminding this organization that that is in writing. Eliminates the fear which stifles innovation and risk-taking. Um, and so with that, um, it's important that leaders stand on that and articulate their support for teachers who feel like they are taking a risk. Um, and then the third recommendation was to provide time, space and ways for teachers to explore um, their students' identities resulting in knowledge that can be used to create more meaningful curriculum for students. And I connected that to this philosophy that the educational process can be enhanced by recognizing multiple intelligences and by providing alternative instructional models to address students' differences, varied learning styles and talents. Someone asked me recently about um, teachers who were not culturally responsive. Did I consider them still good teachers, are they failing, are they failures? And one of the things that I said particularly about Celine schools is that, no, we already know that Celine teachers are good teachers and that if a child is put in a teacher's classroom and they are being taught to read and they're given a book about frogs every week, like they're going to learn how to read. They're gonna learn how to read and they're probably going to be pretty good readers. But that experience will lack the richness, the depth, um, the variety and will probably also at some point lack inspiration for that child. And we will not be creating necessarily what we wanna create, which is a lifelong learner, a global citizen um, and someone who can contribute to society um, beyond frogs. And so that is, um, that's why it's important that we pay attention to students' um, different needs and their varied learning styles. So, another thing that I did and most of you attended these and so I can kind of go over this pretty quickly, but I did invite parents in to learn about culturally responsive instruction and to ask me questions about it and to see how culturally responsive instruction fits into some of the other things that Celine has been doing for a while, like the English Language Learner Program, like um, student affinity groups, like social emotional learning and the multi-tiered system of support. And so, this three-part series um, was an effort to really partner with parents in learning about this. So, on, I, in one column, I have teachers learning about it, on another column, I have parents learning about it and then I am working to advise administrators on how to support those um, efforts. And so, I just screenshot a couple of the slides that um, had questions that parents submitted and I believe that depending on what session you were in, I may have gotten to all of the questions. If you were in the first session, I definitely didn't, but I did publish um, these slides and distribute them so that parents could see the, the answers to their questions. Um, and so I pulled a few questions that kind of stand out and that really inform my work um, after that, like really looking at some of these questions, oh, you can go to the next slide, sorry. Um, some of these questions were really good in that they drew out, kind of fleshed out some things that um, I may not have been actively looking at before this, so. Um, one question was, "Per the article distributed during the CRA, CRI presentation, please provide Celine's schools' data supporting a disparity in performance on standardized assessments amongst races." So, um, if you remember in the first series, I passed out an article that was um, written by an educator who used her own experience to express why culturally responsive instruction is important in education. And so this parent wanted um, some local data to prove that it was necessary. And so, I reached out to colleagues in the district to help me locate um, some NWEA scores and these scores went back from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty and um, I think I got math and reading scores. And so I sat there with a, uh, you know, with a stack of these scores and put them into um, a digestible color-coded graph here to show that there are disparities in performance um, by race. And these disparities tell a lot of stories and the NWA itself tells a story over time. But um, these, this, this is exactly something that I was not looking to work on particularly, I was not looking to work on disproportionality um, this year, that was not a part of the plan, but this parent asked this question and the answer gave us um, put us really right in line with what we know to be true statewide and nationally. Learning is cultural and learning over time remains cultural. And so, uh, what I could conclude here is that um, there is a disparity between white students and their Asian classmates. There is a disparity between black and brown students and their white classmates. And these disparities are happening with kids sitting in the same classrooms with the same teachers and um, we also can see that maybe there is a, a pattern where all students are not doing as well by the time they get to spring. But it looks as if students of color, black and brown students in particular, are doing significantly worse by the time they go through a whole school year. Like there is so much here that, you know, is not necessarily part of the, the plan right now, but I found it really useful to be able to share this with parents, partly because I'm not making this up. I'm not like sitting at home making up theories about education in America, this is, and I, and I picked these two randomly. So I picked um, seventh grade um, math and seventh grade reading here randomly, just to see. And this is what, and I found that every grade level I went to and every um, subject area, the same pattern existed. You can go to the next slide. Um, another parent asked a really good question, "Why are black students performing lower than white students? How much of that gap comes from cultural mismatch and how much from other factors? Can you research this and maybe make a pie chart of what you find?" So, I did not make a pie chart. Um, I found a pie chart that was a hypothesis um, submitted by a university professor that there are a number of reasons why black children appear to be underperforming their white classmates in America's public schools. And what this professor shared was that, and it's important for teachers to know those other reasons. And that sits at the core of what culturally responsive instruction is and so. Um, but, the overwhelming majority of the literature on this topic um, tells us a couple of things. One, I pulled um, NAEP um, scores from two thousand nineteen, I tried to find scores from the before times because I didn't wanna count for COVID. Um, and you can go to the NAEP, which is the Nation's Report Card Test. Um, so I did not look specifically for whether or not Celine students took this test, but this is just a general snapshot. And I looked at the state of Michigan and nationally and I chose um, white, black and Hispanic as groups to compare to each other because oftentimes what we hear is that um, you know, poor kids are going to do worse than rich kids. And maybe that's why, maybe it has nothing to do with the teaching, maybe it has to do with socioeconomic status. But when you take income or socioeconomic status um, out of it or you compare poor white kids to poor black kids, you still see the same disparities. Same thing if you take rich white kids and rich black kids and compare them, you still see disparities. And so, income is a factor, but it is not the factor. Um, and so, my answer to this question was, yes, there are reasons, there are real reasons and some of them uh, revolve around bias and racism, uh, unequal access, lack of representation. And it must be a problem because look at how many books you can go read about the education or the achievement gap in this country. And so, I shared seven books that, you know, I think this parent might be interested in because there are lots of reasons, lots of theories, lots of uh, evidence that this is real. And then, one final question, I think I got the most feedback about this question after the parent education series and um, this question really helped to kind of illuminate the, uh, a mindset that exists not only in our community, but in our state and in the, the nation. And it is a historically present mindset. And so I'll, I'll, I'll read the question and I'll talk about how this question has informed the work um, moving forward. So, the question says, "If students can only, only learn well when the lessons and points are taught in their culture, then whose culture wins? Which students will be allowed to learn best? Which lesson, will lessons cycle through different cultures in each class? It sounds like that's the plan. Then each child, black, brown, Asian, white, genders, identities, religions, et cetera, will only learn his or her own points well. They will miss the lesson points that are not about them. If that's true, should lessons be broken out by intersectional categories and each student only be taught in his or her cultural language? How is that practical?" And this is, this is like a really good question because it provides a lot of teachable points, a lot of teachable moments there. And um, as, as an educator, sometimes when, when you have students who ask you a difficult question, you have to step back and uh, you, you wanna find the best answer. So I did take a lot of time to look at, like, how can I best address? Um, there's so much here. And so, the idea of one culture winning um, really resonated with me and it made me think about Native American education and how that is a wonderful example of what happens when one culture wins. And so, I sought out a Native American educational scholar, award-winning teacher and I found a video clip of her talking about, um, kind of talking about this topic and shared it with parents, made it available to parents. Uh, oh, sorry, go to the next slide, I forget that y'all don't see my screen here. Uh, okay, so, um, so the, what I wanted to um, first address is sometimes you have to address what's at the root of this question and so I did that first. Um, "One culture winning is the opposite of inclusion, it is ethnocentric, oppressive and harmful. Winning is not and never should, or should never be the focus or goal." Um, and what this woman speaks about in this um, little video clip here, she talks about how um, and some of you are aware of this, maybe some of you are not, but the Native American boarding schools um, were about one culture winning. They were developed with the intention of educating Na- Native American children, but the theme, particularly of the Carlisle Indian School, which is in Pennsylvania, the theme was to uh, kill the Indian and save the child. And it was the idea of taking away the Native American culture to replace it with a culture that's a culture winning. And um, this woman in the video talks about um, how Native American education is reclaiming their culture in education, allowing students to learn in traditional languages and through traditional cu- uh, customs and uh, incorporating all kinds of responsiveness to that. And so, at the end of this question, I, I really wanted to make it clear that student learning as an outcome is what is practical and student-centered learning is not centered on what is practical for teachers. If you find a teacher doing what's practical for them, there's no joy in that classroom. Um, because eventually you will lose engagement with your students, you will lose uh, creativity, there will be a loss of innovation. Um, I also talked about how culturally responsive instruction is, is really not about focusing on one culture or what is deemed to be the main points, but focusing on the many ways of proving your learning. And um, when we focus on one main way of knowing, that is almost kind of like a collective agreement that there is one way of knowing and we all know as educators that that's not true. All right, um, something else I've shared with both parents and with um, teachers is our why. Um, anyone who has done any work in leadership, you know that if people know why they're doing, next slide please. If people know why they're doing what they're doing and if that why resonates with them, they're more likely to be motivated to do it. And so it has been my intention to constantly remind everyone why we're doing this. And so I won't read through this, but um, on one side of this slide is a statement from the K-12 Insight Focus Group conducted in two thousand nineteen where students are asking, students are asking to be taught about what they are calling more controversial issues and to learn about different cultures and to focus and promote global citizenship and multicultural sensitivity. On the other side, I pulled some data from the two thousand twenty census projections and pointed out that our students are going to come of age, become adults, become voters and become uh, possibly become uh, parents and employees in what will be the most diverse United States of America ever. Um, right now, more than half of all students in public schools are not white, right now, like as of two thousand twenty. Um, but by two thousand sixty, um, a third of children in public schools will identify, or a third of children, period, will identify as a white, not Hispanic, but two-thirds will not. Um, and because in two thousand thirty, um, the baby boom generation will be sixty-five and, and you know, maybe enjoying life on the beach somewhere, um, there will be a lower natural birth rate and so immigration will drive our population growth. And so it is critical that we prepare our kids to live in that more diverse America. Next slide. Okay, so one of the goals was to have teachers develop a definition of culturally responsive instruction, to have um, to kind of give them a foundation, a very like skeletal framework and then let Celine teachers define it because they are experts on Celine students and how Celine teaches. And so, um, this definition was originally supposed to be um, uh, premiered, if you will, on that snow day we had in February, that was an early release day, but it didn't happen. And so not, the whole, the whole staff has not seen this yet, I shared it with the uh, middle school staff, um, with um, uh, some literacy tutors at a literacy tutor meeting and then I'm scheduled to share this with elementary and high school at, at separate meetings. Um, however, they have seen a version of this. This is what I would call the final draft, but I hesitate to call it final. It really needs to be a living draft because as our society changes and it will change more rapidly um, than it's maybe changed in the past, we need to be willing to, to edit this. Um, as we learn more about instruction, um, we need to be able to edit this, so. Um, but I am asking teachers to live with this definition and um, I am not gonna read this to you. I'm going to pause and give you a chance to read it because, why not? So, this went through several iterations throughout the year and um, once we got to, so I asked every teacher to give me their thoughts, so I started with a lot of thoughts. Um, and then I um, kind of reduced that down to asking members of the teaching and learning team who I consider um, kind of experts in teaching and learning in this district beyond my experience um, here and I wanted them to make sure this kind of uh, jived with other things that are in print and other initiatives that are in place. Um, and then I use the um, literacy tutors kind of as a focus group to run a few things by them to see how they, um, how this worked with them and I made like another adjustment and then this is where we are now. And so the idea here is that um, I'm gonna, I'm asking teachers to, you know, print this out, put it somewhere where you can see it and start to um, look at it. If it makes you feel inspired, great, if it makes you feel uncomfortable, also great. Because this is the direction that we are all going to go in and, next slide, which is the final slide. Um, when I talk about making it, inspiring you or making you uncomfortable, um, I've kind of created this uh, map of what it looks like for a teacher to go on this journey. This is based on both the literature and my real-life interactions with teachers who are on this journey. And um, it is based specifically on Celine teachers. And at the very beginning of the journey, Celine teachers be, are, you know, it's documented, Celine teachers are great. They are really good teachers, I'm a parent, I can vouch for that, I'm a parent who's also a teacher, I can vouch for that. Um, and as teachers go on this journey, so they start off as these instructional and content experts and they decide they want to transition toward being more culturally responsive. Um, but then what happens, and when I've talked to teachers here who are really interested in this, um, they will tell you and they're very, very uh, honest about it, which is, which gives us so much good uh, feedback. Um, they run into resistance, either it's internal or external. or external. Internal could be their personal belief system, internal could be fear, could be fatigue, um, but external could be lack of time, uh, and lack of information. So comfort and competence come into play. And so once teachers reach that resistance, sometimes they end up kind of back where they started, being instructional and content experts, but really blind to what's needed by students who may be marginalized, students who are different, students who have cultural identities that often are not, uh, front and center of our instructional materials. And so they go back into teaching with no cultural lens and that risk marginalizing students who are already, um, marginalized. And so, um, the goal here is to kind of push and pull teachers through that resistance with support, support from their leadership, um, support from the community, because I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from community members, parents, um, who, who have, yeah, I've never seen or talked to before reaching out, supporting this work. Um, so that teachers become culturally responsive instructional and content experts. So, um, right now I am in the process of, uh, conducting a research project, um, here working with teachers about retention and what is needed to continue to diversify our staff and retain those people who make our staff diverse. And, um, I'm in the middle of that, so I don't really like to talk about research and progress because I don't know what it's going to look like at the end, but I will be reporting that to, um, to Steve and Kurt so we can continue, um, those efforts. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you, Shannon. Questions or comments for Shannon? Yeah, Candace.
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done on this and, um, I know it's been a lot in a short amount of time and, and I know it's taken a lot of your time while you're in the midst of, or we're in the midst of completing your doctorate, which I just want to say congratulations publicly. And I, I've noticed a difference in my son and what he's coming home and talking about, the conversations that are happening in class. So I, I believe it is the fruit of what, the work that you've been doing with teachers and I just really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do want to add, I do want to add that.
Nope.
I do want to add what Shannon was saying, thanking you for the work, Shannon. You work part-time, but you really don't. You're working all the time on this and it's greatly appreciated in the district.
Thank you. My, my, um, brain is like an old Dell computer that doesn't shut down, so I don't stop until I'm finished and yeah, so.
Okay, I, yeah, I have lots of thoughts, but I'll keep them quick as best I can. Collaboration is such a big deal. I will speak to my experience as an educator in the field and saying that I recognize that we do feel risk in, in this work, right? And, and so I think when we do, when we foster collaborative environments, we also create professional learning communities where people can have real authentic dialogue. And one of the things that I love about the, what I'm hearing is that this is about teachers and empowering them to have hard conversations with one another so that we can grow and foster change together, right? Because I would argue that like, I love hearing you talk about, everybody's kind of getting there and ready on different levels, right? But like, as long as we continue to empower this work and it's important work, then I think the outcome for our students, as you're saying, is so powerful. And so I'm happy to hear us like say that like, we're just committed to like this being sloppy and this being hard and this being something that we're not giving up on. And so I, 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 first of all, I want to, I want to thank you for that because that comes through huge. I will tell you, I also love that we're tying it into our compass, we're tying it into the work we want to do and that we're always pushing ourselves to what are our next action steps, right? Because then it is breathing and I love the definition and how that, that can change and that can modify and it can grow with, with our staff as we come along on, on the journey. So for me as an educator, I just see this and I, I'm, I'm excited for the work that we have establishing and that we're doing and I, I want you to know how much I applaud you, Dr. Washington, on this now. Um, I wondered about, you had a graph there where you showed the, that, that our students of different, um, cultural, yeah, like that right there, right? So have we tried, I, I know COVID might made it this difficult. I see seventh grade, 2017, 18. What about 18, 19? What about, and, and I guess I would say that I would be interested in seeing a year at a year, how did we do, right? What changed? What, what focuses do we need to have? And quite frankly, where do we need to place those focuses so that we know that we're, um, representing in our classrooms targeted instruction where we need to?
So to answer that, um, I did not share this with teachers. Um, I know teachers, this would set off all kinds of professional alarms, panic, fear, shame, guilt.
Yeah.
Um, and in some indifference. And this was brought out by the question of a parent and I went on a mission to meet the needs of the parent, but I had to consider that we're still at the place where we're defining what culturally responsive instruction is. And I am, I'm an avid believer and we have to play the long game. I can't start with something like this and throw truly passionate, dedicated educators into trying to fix this before they have skills, language, and confidence and competence to really address these things. And so, um, this was specifically at the request of a parent, um, and, uh, Michelle Skechowicz, um, provided, you know, the, the stack of paper and I randomly chose years and numbers and I avoided the COVID year. Um, and I would say a year or two of this work would probably begin here and find a way to use this to motivate teachers who may respond with panic and indifference to this, we're, we're talking, um, success for kids. We're all bought into success for kids, so let's talk about how we can mitigate this. I also believe that assessments, uh, standardized assessments are changing and ever-evolving and so, um, I would be completely interested in it. I just didn't think this was the right place to start because dedicated educators would, would want to respond immediately and without skills, without language, without competence and comfort, um, it, it could add to the stress of making the transition.
That is so fair, right? Like, and quite frankly, like as we build that confidence, right, to take those risks, we didn't have those built-in systems back in 17, so I, I, I appreciate that and I, I recognize it just, I would love to see us pay attention to it going forward to, to quote-unquote evaluate the work we're doing.
Absolutely.
I think it's super important and I, I do, I thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let me guess, you want the raw data.
I do want the raw data. That's not my main point of view. Um, thank, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to congratulate you for, um, this incredible work that you're doing. Um, you know, I'm, I'm just really impressed by, um, the, by, by everything that you're doing and I think that, you know, um, we're incredibly fortunate to have, um, you here and doing this work. And I think that's, um, you know, we have, we have the beginnings of what could really be a, a model program that others could, could be emulating, um, in the future. So that's something we can, we can really be proud of here. Um, the, the question that I was going to ask was actually about retention, but I won't, I won't ask you that question because your research is ongoing, but I look forward to hearing about that, um, in the future. I will say that, um, I did a little bit of, of my own research before, um, kind of anticipating your, your presentation and, and one thing that I was impressed by, um, doing the research, um, i- is that there are, there are a lot of published studies out there from other districts showing, um, the efficacy of this kind of program for, um, for improving, uh, you know, not, not only is it the right thing to do because it's the right thing to do, but this does actually, uh, there, there is research out there that, that shows that these kinds of approaches do improve test scores. Um, uh, particularly for those marginalized groups that, that we really need to elevate and the, the data shows that we need to elevate, but actually for everybody in the classroom. Um, culturally responsive instruction actually improves, uh, results for, for everybody, regardless of what group they're in. And, um, just, you know, with, putting my research hat on for a moment, um, I think it would be great to think about whether, you know, going forward, we can look at, you know, looking at how our test scores change and, uh, you know, hopefully really improve and narrow that gap over, over time so that we can, we can show just how effective this, this program is, is likely to be in the future. So again, thank you so much for, um, this incredible work that you're doing.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you so much. I know you've been doing incredible work. Um, I agree with Steve, you don't seem part-time. You probably aren't technically. You deserve a raise.
Thank you.
Um, so on your slide, um, about the teacher survey, um, so if only half of the teachers are knowledgeable of all their students' cultures and identities, my question is, how will their students learn about their own cultures and identities and their peers?
Yeah, I think, um, that's what we're working on. Um, you can keep going back, it's the donut, um, that one, yes. Um, so we're, you're talking about, um, the half that hasn't participated in training that involves that self-identity work, right? No? Oh, oh, I know, the one that says knowing, okay, keep going, sorry, this one, yes. Um, so one of the things that I, I recognize this as a need and it's kind of leveled on to the time and space part. Um, in fact, tomorrow I am offering a Compass Connection session for teachers about like just how to explore culture. Um, because, um, particularly if you are not in humanities, if you've not taken anthropology, um, and if you do kind of live and breathe in a very homogeneous world, the idea of exploring culture takes a skill set and it takes a certain knowledge of self before you can do that. And so, um, I do want to empower teachers to figure out how to do that when you, you have a full-time job. I'm not asking you to go and get an anthropology degree on studying culture, but I do want to point you in the direction of how you can start to kind of broaden your knowledge of different cultures in general and then empower you to have the skills and tools to learn about who your students are because your students are individuals first, but they belong to a larger community and you need to have some basic knowledge about that community. I think, um, a really good example of this is, uh, once upon a time in a couple of years ago, there was a meeting that happened on a Sunday evening and it was a, a meeting that was here in this room and it was predominantly African-American parents and, um, it was a Sunday evening. And no one was really, you know, talking about what Sunday evening means in African-American culture, but somebody just kind of like blurted out, well, we're all missing Sunday dinner. And everyone started laughing because everybody knows Sunday dinner is like, it's, it's really, really a big deal in our culture. It is where we gather around the table and we have our soul food and we kind of like enjoy that. Well, that's a cultural thing and the fact that the meeting was on a Sunday night, you know, everybody, everybody, different households, different, you know, different neighborhoods, but everybody kind of laughed because we all understood what that meant. Well, how do you learn about those little nuances? Like maybe not have a meeting on a Sunday night. Like how do you, how do you learn that? That's what I want to empower teachers to be able to explore without putting the burden on that community to educate that teacher, but also empowering that teacher to know their students as first as individuals and then as members of a larger community. And there are some really, uh, time-practical, because we, we know that time is a problem, some real time-practical things that teachers can do over time to, um, kind of build that capacity. But yes, this is prob, this is, this is a problem because A, if you don't know who you are culturally, um, it is difficult for you to explore and appreciate the cultures of others. You're also more likely to appropriate other cultures if you're not aware of your own. And so, um, it is really important that we empower everyone to recognize we all have cultural identities and we need to value them, um, and not use them to take away from others' cultural identities, um, but feel empowered, um, proud, and be able to recognize the value in others, so.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Actually, I, I have one more thing. So you, you made me think. So I almost see this like pre-post testing, if you will. So do we have some intention, this is what I'm thinking about, to ask these questions again at the end of our, our work here, or not even at the end of our work, continuously as we go along?
So, um, ideally that is what I would like to do. I may not ask the, the question about training in that because I now know that I have sat with every teacher, so I don't need to like take the pulse on that. I know that, whether you recognize it or not, you have had some. But I will, yes, I would like to pull some of those questions and, um, to kind of take the pulse on where teachers are feeling in terms of comfort. So any of the questions that fit under that, that comfort, that competency piece, um, I, I would, I am doing a informal poll of teachers where, and I don't think I have that slide in this show, where, um, I'm creating a, like a self-inventory. It's four things where I'm asking teachers to check yes or I need help. And one of those four things is I am knowledgeable about my students, all of my students' cultures. They are either going to say yes or I need help. Um, and so I am kind of informally collecting that and the I need help is what, then I go to, you know, my colleagues like Steve and say, look, they're asking for help. Let's build this for them. And so, um, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, I just, I want to thank you for your work and I, and I, um, just the work that you're moving forward and, and also acknowledge the work that, um, that several members of our, our community and our staff have done and, and that you've been able to move forward. I, I see Mr. Lantman in the back and I know that the other Mr. Lantman, I know, has done a lot of this work too, and I've had the, the privilege of, of being in that classroom. Um, and I don't want to, I, I know I just mentioned a name, but I don't want to mention names because there, I would forget someone, but, um, I know that this work prior to you coming was, was moving forward and then you coming has just ignited that and, and has really accelerated that, so I appreciate that. And, um, also you're, um, as, as has been mentioned, you are part-time, but you're extremely generous with your time. I know I've, I've benefited from that as I know many, um, other parents and community members and staff have, so thank you for that. Um, this really resonated with me tonight because, um, I had the opportunity today to, um, to participate in a professional development, uh, around the work of Gloria Ladsen-Billings, so thinking about the Dream Keepers and those teachers, um, that she studied and, and so if you're looking for research in this area, that's, that's one place to go, but, um, the high expectations, um, developing cultural competence and raising and cultivating a sociopolitical consciousness. And when all three of those things exist in a classroom, all of our students thrive. And in her work, um, she found that especially our bracket, black and brown students were thriving and their peers were thriving. So that, that just really resonated with me tonight. But one other thing that I heard, um, her mention, and it goes along with one of the questions that you had from parents, was that, um, that when we center, um, a predominant culture in our classrooms, um, we are not only being exclusive and, um, and really we're not creating relevance for a number of our students in the learning. And so that, that question resonated with me that if students learn the best from, from cultures and from backgrounds that are this, theirs, then do we need to, you know, segregate to, to meet their needs? And actually, her work, Gloria Ladsen-Billings' work, um, tells us, no. First of all, it should be our goal to be cultivating multiculturalism and if not multiculturalism, at the very least, bi-culturalism in our students because when we center the predominant, um, culture, we're being exclusive, but we are also, um, we are also creating, as you said, um, students who are not prepared for the world that they're going to be living in. So just, it just really, really resonated, um, to me thinking about, um, thinking about the work ahead. I'd love to, um, talk to you more about this self-inventory and, um, just learning from that myself as an educator and human being. Um, and then the last thing that I wanted to say is that, um, for me, the lens that I've been thinking of recently is, um, culturally affirming instruction instead of culturally responsive because I feel like we are doing a lot of responding to things and, um, so I'm thinking about how we can be proactive and so changing that in my own mind to affirming instruction helps me to begin with that plan from the outset, from the onset, instead of, um, responding to it. Um, of course, we want to respond and know the students that are in front of us, but thinking about it in a way that is proactive and affirming, um, has just been really helpful. So anyways, I just learned from you every time, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. I'll throw the slide with the self-inventory in the slide. Thank you, thank you. I'll throw the slide with the self-inventory in the slideshow once I sit down, so you can see it. I think it's just four, it's just four items, so, yeah. Thank you. Oh, okay. And I, I was very clear with you. I have not read all of those books. I've maybe, I've read actually two books that I didn't put on there. But the point I was trying to prove is that this is a heavily researched area. This is not anecdotal. It is not limited to Celine. It's every public education system that deals with that disparity. And it gets into some difficult topics about systemic bias, and those are hard topics to talk about, and I believe this district is here for that conversation.
Shannon, I have questions for later that I want to deal with via email with you about this slide in particular, and culturally sustainable pedagogy and things like that, going way, way forward. And so, I, I kind of like to see some of the raw data that led to this slide at some point. So, I'll ask my questions via email. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Dr. Washington.
Oh, my gosh. Don't make me start crying.
We appreciate you and congratulations.
I did. Yes. I literally just stopped crying on Sunday. It took me, yes. So, I, I said I was not going to cry, but yes, I did, and it was great. Thank you.
Very nice. Well, congratulations.
It's okay. Let the tears come.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. I'd like to please now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March 22nd, 2022 closed session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. All right, Michael, thank you.
Support.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I mean, shouldn't we see them?
I, I did that, I did that. Again, I, I'm like, hold on. Okay, Secretary Jones, if you could please do us the favor of passing out the minutes from the meeting, and Mr. Lantman and friends, if you would, if, if you're waiting to break the, break the drums down or anything, if you want to do it, we're going to read before we vote, so please feel free. I don't want to keep anything from, anyone from any activities or homework or anything. I know. I, I.
Couple of ring shots.
I know. We appreciate you waiting. Sorry about that. They're very gracious. Okay, so we'll take a minute to read, and then give these back to Secretary Jones when we're done. I just had a clarifying question on, on, and I don't think this is breaking closed session, but I, I'd like us to review the, the members that were present for this, this meeting. Am I, am I remembering this incorrectly? But I didn't believe that we had Central Administration present. Besides Dr. Latch. Good catch, yeah. So, if, if we could, I, I would like to amend, amend the minutes to exclude Central Administration with the exception of Dr. Latch. Okay, if everyone, if anybody else has any other comments, or?
Withdraw my motion.
We'll revise it, yeah.
I'd like to move to accept these as amended.
Thank you, Michael. Jenny, would you like to second that?
Yes, I'll support that.
Okay, perfect. So Candace can collect these, and we'll go to vote. Now we'll go to vote. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of revised minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries now, seven zero. Next, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the Washtenaw County Schools Fiber Consortium Master Service Agreement as submitted by Superintendent Latch.
Motion, Gerby.
Thank you, Brad. Michael, thank you. Dr. Latch, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I can be brief. And Jay's here. Jay's been working on a number of projects. This is one of them, in that this will just support the shared county costs for our network. And, and ultimately, we all work together to provide those services, and, and we want to approve it.
May I ask a question? Whoever knows the answer. I noticed in the, in that long document, there was reference to the SEN, the State Education Network. Does that mean that every district is on the same network throughout the state, to your knowledge? That we're all sharing or gathering data?
That's a, that's a Jay question.
I thought so. I'm looking at, I'm looking at you, Mr. Grossman. If, if you know, if you don't know, don't come up.
So, in answer to your question, we're not all using the exact same network, but all the networks that each county is using is part of this larger MICE network. And that is one of the requirements for us to be part of that. So, sticking with the Washtenaw County's internet, and you will keep us in compliance with that with the rest of the state.
So, this is a consortium, not just in Washtenaw, but statewide? Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Jay or Steve? All right, seeing none, motion made, Gerby second, McVeigh. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the technology purchase package in the amount of $486,800, $876 as submitted by Jay Grossman, Director of Technology.
So moved, Jones.
Thank you, Candace.
Support, Miller.
Thank you, Jenny. Jay, would you like to say anything else about this one? I hate to get you back up. Okay. Any questions for Jay about anything that was in our packet?
I'll speak to this just briefly, that this is part of the normal refurbishment renewal cycle, and that's partly, you know, these are funded through our, our bond cycles, and, and it's important that we keep up with relevant technology. This particular one is primarily iPads.
Okay, excellent. Motion made, Jones second, Miller. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. And I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the changes to the Katherine Steiner Burr Scholarship as submitted by Miranda Owesley, Assistant Superintendent of Finance. Motion made. Michael, thank you, second.
Support.
Jenny, thank you. Miranda, would you like to say a few words?
I would. In general, we have this memorandum that was in your board packet, but I also wanted to give some contextual history to the scholarship. So, the Katherine Steiner Burr Scholarship was established by Katherine Burr's husband, Howard Burr, in her name at the time of her passing in 1986. Both the Steiner and Burr families have been longtime supporters of Celine schools. Katherine's father, Lloyd Steiner, provided a great contributions of, in the form of land made available for the construction of two X Celine schools in the sixties and the seventies. Katherine was a University of Michigan graduate and a reading specialist for the Celine schools for approximately 15 years. Mr. Burr's vision for this scholarship was to help Celine students from disadvantaged backgrounds get a kickstart to their post-secondary education. Over the years, the scholarship has been awarded with Mr. Burr's vision in mind. Now, Mr. Burr and Mrs. Burr's son, Thomas Burr, has been made arrangements that the scholarship will continue in perpetuity to assist two graduating Celine High School students. His desires, the two students will receive a $5,000 scholarship each to assist them in their post-secondary education endeavors, just as his parents had wished. Further, every five years, the scholarship is increased by 500. This will be one of the most generous scholarship awards at Senior Awards Night. How fortunate we are to have supporters like Mr. Burr, who are willing to continue the good that his parents started, which in turn benefit our students.
Great. Thank you, Miranda. Thank you, Mr. Burr and, and family, of course, for the, and Katherine for the service for those 15 years especially. Any questions or comments for Miranda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to vote. Motion made, McVeigh second, Miller. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries seven zero. Next up, discussion items, Treasurer Gerby.
All righty. Finance met today, 5:00 PM items that we discussed. In a quick recap, first thing we discussed was the State of Michigan School Bond Loan Fund Interest Rate Change. We're realizing a floor change on that from a floor of 3% to a floor of 1.9%. And so, what that does is that helps us to realize our school bond repayments, and that assists us with that. And so, that is a welcome change provided by the legislature, and we're happy to see that. The second thing we talked about was the bond. We, and we talked about the purchase tonight of iPads. We, we should be aware that this is pretty much the last major item that we're going to be able to move from that bond. So, we have realized almost the entirety of the Series Three of our bonds. And I guess what I would say is that, I think this is an excellent example, as, as Dr. Latch said, about the importance of being able to, to maintain cutting-edge and be able to, to keep relevant and real technologies in our students' hands. And, and so, that refresh is something that, I hate to say, but we're just going to have to do, right? And, and these technologies, I feel like as things get faster and things get better quicker, it's almost like things become obsolete as soon as they're like purchased. So, the reality for us is if we want to stay with that, on the, on the cusp of, of those things, that, you know, the bond has helped us to do that tremendously. So, so thank you to our, to the taxpayers. Thank you to our, our base for, for providing those things for our students. The next thing was the Burr Scholarship, as you just heard, and we approved. $4 million in 11T grant funding. I have to thank Ms. Owesley for being on top of these types of things. You know, she's on top of so many things, whether it's our different funds, whether it's our SIR money, 11T. I just, I appreciate the fact that she's on top of it. So, there's an application that is out, and this money is targeted money that has to be allocated to very particular groups, but the, the capture for us will be $4 million, or potential for $4 million. And that's, that's significant money for us, and I'm, I'm glad that the state is, is doing that. And then the last thing we talked was just a little bit about the, the budget process, you know? And, and it appears that right now, the legislature and the governor are, are in tune with one another as far as expecting the budget process to, to coincide with the end of our fiscal school year. And so, obviously, it'd be welcome news for us to be able to realize how we're going to fund our schools going forward next year without having to, to wait for that information and no per pupil increases and that kind of thing. And right now, we're on a good track. So, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, Michael?
Treasurer Gerby. So, the 11T was interesting. It's, it's state money, but it's SIR, it's federal money to the state, and 11T is a subsection of, of that. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, unless you want to add to it.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Brad? All right, seeing none, we will move to administration updates. Dr. Latch?
Okay, my primary update tonight is to talk about a proposed millage renewal, a possible proposed millage renewal. And this is, as Trustee Gerby was mentioning, we're finishing up Series Three, which one, you know, we're talking about technology refresh. One of our final projects is also the middle school gym is going to be redone, which is going to be great. So, anyway, here's an update as to where we're at. So, initially, the Capital Projects team, along with King Scott, which is the architect that's been helping us with this process, did a needs assessment, went throughout all the buildings, went on all our grounds, and determined that there were various needs. Millions of dollars in, in needs in the future to keep our district relevant moving forward and provide a great instruction for our students. And so, after that, we started to meet with focus groups. And as you know, Mr. Raft is now in the role of Principal of Operations, so he was starting to help lead those, along with King Scott, to look at different aspects of the bond, and what, you know, what was most important for the community and these various groups? Discussions about STEAM, technology, transportation, athletics, the infrastructure. All those were, were coming up in those focus groups. Twelve of those in total, from a diverse group of stakeholders. And then as feedback started to come in, we were certainly listening about, well, you know, what, where does the focus need to lie? And, and some of the shifting that's going on is it needed to make sure that we had, making sure the educational focus was really at the forefront. And so, that was coming out in those focus groups as well. Mr. Raft then circled back to various groups, and what's happening now is revision of what that proposed millage renewal is going to look like. The other thing that we did is we did hire a survey company, which is a reputable group that, in short, they call till they get 400, at least 400 people in the community to give them feedback on a series of questions. It's a 15 to 20-minute phone interview, and in essence, they're trying to determine the likelihood of support based on these various things that could be in a millage renewal. And, and, and so, they're gathering that information. That just happened last week, where they were able to share that data. So, now we're taking that, the Capital Projects team and King Scott, and really crunching the numbers, and then determining what will be, you know, the final proposal that's brought forward that would have the best opportunity for community support. And so, that's where we are now. We're going to be teasing that out over the course of the next three weeks. And then the plan at the board table would be that a more formalized report in, at, at the May 10th board meeting, and then seeking action at the last board meeting of the month, May 24th, to say, "Here is the proposal," and then ask for the trustees to provide feedback, and then ultimately vote on supporting that moving forward. So, that, that's an update. Oh, and then I did want to add, this is not related to that, but tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, I'm looking forward to, we have a TED Talk going on at, at the high school, which is going to be really exciting. Basically, student run, where they're going to have all these TED Talks from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the audit, in the auditorium. And I'm actually, I'm very much looking forward to that event.
All right. Thank you very much. Julian?
All right. Well, I'll start with our spring sports. Well, they've begun. We had some baseball games, softball games, water polo's getting at it. And, I mean, it all seems great. It's, you know, 70 and sunny right now. Who, who doesn't want to be, who doesn't want to be hanging out outside? But I also, I wouldn't be surprised if, I, I'm saying I think we're going to get at least one more day of snow, from, from my experience of living in Michigan. I'm not saying I want it. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to humble myself right now with, with the great weather. But I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing a new set of sports come by and cheer on my classmates, because it's gotten a lot more fun, especially as a senior. And then, secondly, I'd like to acknowledge our valedictorian, varsity soccer player, club leadership role-holding, Jason Chaney's actually back there.
Can you stand up? I like your shirt.
So, you, we saw him playing. Great job. Jazz band was sweet. I don't know how you guys don't have a strong fan base yet, because I'd, I'd like to hear that every day walking into school. But on top of his schoolwork, clubwork, and, you know, athletics, and also musical talent, he's been working at Burger King for two years now, and he applied for and received a scholarship called the King Scholarship from the Burger King Foundation, which is given to one person per region, and which for us is the entire Midwestern region. And I was chosen off of GPA, Community Involvement, which Jason has no lack of. His name's all over the place. So, they threw a nice little event at the Burger King here in Celine. And we have some pictures. We had a couple, we had a lot of guys come out, and it was a nice event to see. I've never seen a Burger King balloon or a Burger King check. They were both pretty cool to see. I don't want the balloons to take away from your achievement. I don't want the balloons to take away from your achievements, Jason, but the Burger King balloons are pretty cool. And then on the next slide, it's a nice picture of me with my crown hat, and then also, you know, the fabulous Jason Chen, and then our nice picture of Chen with his Burger King scholarship. So congratulations, man. He's attending Northwestern in the fall, studying data science on a pre-med track. So his hard work is not even begun yet. Sorry, man. Well, congratulations, Jason.
Wow. Congratulations. And I don't know, it would be nice to have the valedictorian come back and talk a little bit at a future board meeting, that's all I'm saying. Could be an invitation looming. Trustee comments? Would anyone like to make an update? Yeah, Brad?
I have one thing, and it's completely selfish. Happy birthday, Graham. 14 years old today, and Dad's here. So happy birthday, Graham.
That's a special kid to me, too, so happy birthday to Graham.
I did want to, I, I've been getting some feedback on, I think from people who have been participating in the focus groups. And so one thing that I've been thinking about as the the small microscope that I have of my, of the experiences of my own three children, and how diverse their educational experiences have been, their interests, their sports involvement, their arts involvement, and all of those those pieces. One thing is I've talked to a variety of, variety of people, and hope to continue to talk to a variety of people about their vision for the district, is that, my hope is that should, should we move forward with this, that the idea is that we would be thinking with the lens of both and and not either or. So in our household, many of you know, we have 15-year-old twins, who couldn't be more different, other than they came from the same womb. So when we're thinking about these things at our household, we're thinking about the things that that one, one of, one, one person in our family would love to see more emphasis in the arts and performance, and then another member of our household would love to see some emphasis on on the Southwest Consortium, would love to see some emphasis on athletics and all of those things. And so I think that it's important for our community to consider that that there, that there are a variety of students, a variety of ideas, a variety of visions, and so rather than canceling one idea for another, just considering both and, and one thing that I know about Celine is that we are full of innovation, and so thinking about how, how we can leverage that innovation to meet the needs of the variety of students that we have. So that is, that is what I've been thinking about.
I did, two things, just a reminder to the board that it hasn't been announced yet, but on Thursday next week at 6:00 or 7:00, I'm not sure, there's going to be the annual WISD budget presentation, and we, as a board, have one month to approve, accept, accept or not, the budget they put forward. So because they're holding it virtually this year, we figured there might be a few more people in attendance, but I will be attending, and I suspect you will too as well, Superintendent Latch, maybe? Okay. This week I was at the, this past week, this has been a whirlwind week for me, I was at the National Science Teachers Association in Houston, Texas, and listened to some fascinating people, scientists, world-renowned medical leaders, talking about science misinformation, disinformation that's been going on, some fascinating sessions. I brought back piles of posters and calendars and so forth, some of which I might even be able to share. But the coolest thing I discovered was an electron microscope from Hitachi that I think $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, we could outfit the board with, or at least have have one out for us to play with. We looked at some fascinating things through it. Yeah, I know you could, yeah. But it's fantastic, vendor hall and so forth, and it was so, it was our first in-person presentation, or conference like that that I've been to in two years, of course, obviously, and more to come. The next one's going to be in Chicago, which is only four hours away by Wolverine, you know, so expect to see some of us there. Anyway, thank you for letting me share.
Thanks. Anybody else? No? I just wanted to remind everybody about the Foundation for Celine Area Schools event on April 28 at Imagine Theater, includes dinner, movie, and auction items. They are taking registrations right now, so please go to, I believe it's supportfsas.org to get your ticket. And thank you to the Foundation for everything that they do and all of their wonderful volunteers. I also wanted to personally just say thank you to parents who write in and give us feedback and share their their student stories. We appreciate and respect you. That's it. Moving on to the consent agenda, I wanted to just, in the lens of operational efficiency, I won't be reading the consent agenda any longer. We'll be making sure that everything continues to be listed in the minutes. So I would like to please entertain a motion to authorize the listed items as part of the consent agenda.
So moved, Jones.
Candace, thank you.
Yeah. Does this updated printed agenda include the the recent additional field trip? Okay, just wanted to be sure.
No, thank you for clarifying. It's the Grand Haven one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A support then, I guess.
Then Jenny's all in on that. All right, excellent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. In closing, items scheduled for our next agenda.
Athletic department update will be at the next meeting with Ashley and Jeff.
Okay, we look forward to seeing them back here, now that they've had a little bit of time to immerse themselves. Betty, I don't have any public comment forums, is that correct? Okay, we're going to skip over that piece and acknowledge that we had no second public comment. Our next meeting, the next, or the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on April 26, 2022, at 6:30 PM. I'd like to now please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting for April 12, 2022, at 8:46 PM.
So moved.
Jenny, thank you. Michael, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned.